No, but I don't know.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Greg, would you perform a roll call please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember spread.
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Shahadeh?
Present.
Matt Fig?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Henry Walt?
Present.
All present, your honor.
Very good. On deck, Andrew Faiman with the comprehensive plan update.
So, gonna give a brief overview and progress that we've made on achieving the goals in the comprehensive plan. The new comprehensive plan was adopted a little more than a year ago in September of last year. During the past year, some amount of progress has been made on 67 out of 82 goals that were contained within the plan. Progress made on these goals ranges from total completion to completion of just some very preliminary steps. This presentation just give a quick overview towards some of the major, some of the more notable progress we've made towards achieving these goals. In the council agenda tonight should have been a detailed memo detailing progress made on each goal, kind of laying out where we are on each of the 82 goals. And so I'm just gonna quickly hit some of the highlights. A new zoning ordinance is one of the most important ways that the vision of the new comprehensive plan will be implemented. Since the adoption of the comprehensive plan back in September of 2013, staff has been at rework on a total rewrite of the zoning ordinance based on what was contained within the comprehensive plan. The initial draft of this new zoning, which is largely complete and is on target for completion by the end of the year. So we'll be bringing forward for your, that, bringing that forward for your review starting sometime in the new year. A complete streets policy was adopted in November of last year fulfilling goal T-11 of the plan. This complete streets policy was recognized by the National Complete Streets Coalition as one of the 10 best complete streets policies adopted nationwide in 2013. Another major goal of the comprehensive plan related to sidewalks and notable progress has been made there. The fiscal year 15 budget contains $50,000 for the construction of new sidewalk connections. And we also managed to obtain another further $50,000 in the form of a grant from the Wellmark Foundation, giving us a total of $100,000 to build new sidewalk connections. And five projects providing safe routes to schools have been identified, and those will be constructed in the spring of 2015.
And before you go on the next slide, staff met last week, I believe it was, with Bi-State Regional Planning Commission. Of course, we're also working on a sidewalk policy that'll be coming forward to City Council as well.
Right, um, which kind of brings me to my next slide here. Regarding a bike and pedestrian master plan, the city partnered with the University of Iowa and the Iowa Initiative for Sustainability to create a draft bike and pedestrian master plan. And as Greg mentioned, working with Bi-State to develop a sidewalk policy. And all these should funnel together into a bike and pedestrian master plan that should be coming forward to you sometime in 2015. Given the work we're gonna be doing on the zoning ordinance, it's probably gonna be towards the back half of 2015. Just hit on a couple, a couple notable economic development things that happened in the past year. The city provided TIF incentives to the Heinz Company in, that led to the addition of 106 jobs. In September of this year, a small business forgivable loan program was established. And the city, another program, another part of the partnership with the University of Iowa and the Iowa Initiative for Sustainability was the students began examining the issue of why some who work in Muscatine are choosing to live elsewhere. And the feeling, the reason that's important is the comprehensive plan identified this as an important thing that needs to be addressed for economic development. Another notable thing that brought progress towards achieving the goals of the comprehensive plan was the transfer of jurisdiction that occurred in July this year, when the city took ownership of Mississippi Drive and Grandview Avenue from the state of Iowa, as well as a $13 million payment as part of this transfer jurisdiction. This was a major step towards two major goals of the comprehensive plan, which calls for municipal Mississippi Drive and Grandview Avenue to be reconstructed as enhanced and attractive streets. Also in the past year, the city has completed or made significant progress on a number of capital improvement projects that were part of the comprehensive plan. These include Cedar Street, Colorado Street, the continuation, continuing of the West Hill Sewer Separation Project, and the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail, which should be let this winter. The city is working with private investors to assist with the development of the $40 million Riverview Suites project. I believe that's now called the Hotel Stanley, which is the project to build a hotel and a convention center downtown. The city has helped successfully obtained partial funding from the state of Iowa through the Iowa Reinvestment District Program. And the city is currently working on finalizing a development agreement to provide TIF financing to this project. Finally, another major thing that we accomplished last year was certification of, as a Blue Zones community in July, and this was goal C-21 of the comprehensive plan. All the actions that were listed on this goal were completed aside from making certain changes to the zoning ordinance to promote more mixed-use development. This will be done as part of the zoning ordinance rewrite. And the only other thing left undone was increasing access to freshwater drinking fountains along the trails. Final item is Dog Park, which I think you guys will be discussing more at your next meeting. During the process to create the comprehensive plan, this was one of, the need for Dog Park was one of the most frequently brought up comments that we received from the public. In the years since the adoption of the comprehensive plan, an active citizens' group has formed to pursue the accomplishment of this goal. Preferred site has been identified, six acres of municipal land located directly north of the transfer station. The citizens' group has obtained some assistance from the Iowa State University to help with the design of this Dog Park, and they have, I believe, launched private fundraising for this project. So, these are some of the highlights of things, actions that have been taken towards achieving the comprehensive plan goals in the past year. So, happy to entertain any questions anyone might have.
Just as Andrew noted earlier, he's attached a very thorough report to the agenda, about 70 pages long, of a detailed report of all of the different accomplishments. So, thanks for putting that together.
So, is the forgivable, small business forgivable loan program, is all the paperwork ready to go? And we're ready to start taking applications, or is it?
I'm waiting on the final program docs from the bond council sent an email last Friday, some questions and clarifications. I've talked to two prospective applicants, and kept them in loop and hope to bring those to you very shortly, so, as soon as we finish the program docs.
How much money is available?
There'll be $100,000 this year and $100,000 next year.
And a maximum of?
$25,000.
That they can, okay.
For a loan, you mean?
Yes.
Forgivable part of the loan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The Hotel Stanley, then, is that close to?
That's a separate TIF agreement that we're drafting. So, there's two pieces with that. Bond Council is reviewing the Iowa Reinvestment District, the addition to the city code that needs to be made, which allows them to capture the hotel motel and the sales tax on the project. So, that'll be coming forward. We have the, we'll be creating a TIF district for the hotel, the parcels that'll be utilized for the project, and then there'll be a TIF agreement, the basic terms of which the council's already reviewed, and when we sent the pre-application in for the IRD.
So, the hotel motel tax that's generated from the Stanley?
From the project.
Project?
And sales tax.
The sale, the sales tax.
Over, sales tax and hotel motel over a 20-year period will be rebated. That's the $10 million grant through IEDA, is, that's, those funds are obtained through the hotel motel and sales tax off of the project. But I have, it's good news, I had two projects waiting in the wings, so.
Okay.
Anyone else, council?
Lots of good stuff.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, next report is on the airport CIP review, Mr. Thompson.
Obviously, as you guys have noticed, this is community development night. I think all the agenda items are community development related. So, with Steve's retirement, I have taken over managing the airport on the city's behalf with the guidance of Dave and Greg as well. What I'm presenting for you tonight is a submission that we do annually, is our five-year anticipated capital improvement plan for the municipal airport. Don't press that button. I just wanted to summarize what the breakout is for project funding. So, for federally funded projects, the split is 90% federal, 10% local. For state-funded projects, it is 85% state, 15% local. This is the current CIP that we are working off of. You should have gotten, received that in the agenda. I'm not gonna go into much detail on it now. I will address the changes in the draft CIP. So, that's what that is there. So, the current draft CIP, I did hand around a new CIP that is different than what was in the agenda. We will go through those items here. The first, first thing listed here is the update to our master plan, the airport layout plan. This shows where our future hangars are gonna be laid out, where our buildings are located, the elevations of our runway. The reason we're holding off on this is to complete the runway reconstruction project. This is not changing. This is the same as what is in the current ALP. The next project, and feel free if you have any questions while we're going through this, you can stop and ask. The next project is a joint seal on runway 1230 and the crosswind taxiway. This is a new project added to the draft CIP. This project came out of FAA recommendations. Over the last couple months, we have had two visits from the FAA in preparation for the runway reconstruction project. While they're down there, I've asked them to do complete airport walkthroughs in doing this on the crosswind runway and taxiway. They noted that even though the runway is, really is in really good condition for the age of the runway, the seals are starting to gap, they're starting to separate and starting to sag. This will allow water to get down in the expansion joints and could deteriorate the life of the runway. And since our runway is in really good condition and the taxiway is in really good condition, we want to retain that quality going forward. So, this is kind of a, a project to, to retain that quality.
Is this the, is this one actually the crosswind runway?
Yes, it is, yep.
It was new about six years ago, five, something like that?
Like even longer than that.
Longer than that?
I believe it was longer than that. This is, this is new to the draft CIP, but really it's amended from what was in the current CIP. We had a spot there for general pavement maintenance. We think it's, it's acceptable to do an entire route and reseal on the crosswind runway with the engineers' recommendations and FAA recommendations. Keep pressing the wrong button. So, again, we're talking about the crosswind runway and taxiway, the full length of it. And this is what they're gonna be doing. They're gonna be ripping up, taking out, oh, taking out the seals and replacing them. All right, the next project is the taxiway design and reconstruction. This is not a new project. This is in our current CIP. This is the design and reconstruction of the main taxiway. So, there is no changes in funding or scheduling on this project. Next project is a storm sewer culvert and inlet protection. This is a new project to the CIP. At the airport, we do have stormwater inlets.
I don't know.
And the inlets and culverts are being filled with sediment and sand. And, councilmembers, any questions while we're on this? No? Okay. Stormwater management at the airport is regulated by the FAA, so we have to make sure that our stormwater culverts and inlets don't fill with sand. So, this project will be to either engineer a solution to keep silt and sand from filling the culverts, or a natural solution to that. Those would be such as building a, an engineered filtering structure to filter sand and sediment before entering the inlets and culverts. Or a natural solution where we would restore soil quality, do some plantings down there, really increase the vegetation, the vegetation and allow it to filter out before, before reaching the inlets. All right. Next is self-fueling, so a fuel upgrade and incorporating self-fueling. This is an amended project from the current CIP. We have a fuel facility upgrade in the current CIP. The Airport Advisory Commission has recommended self-service fueling at the airport. I think from that meeting, it was discussed that we are the only airport in 200 miles that does not have self-service fueling. Let me get in some of the details here. So, a part of this project, we'd be doing new fuel pumps and the addition of self-service fueling. What this would also relate to is less staffing from Carver Aero. Currently, they, they staff a significant amount of time down there just to fuel, be available to fuel airplanes. So, they would reduce their staffing. This would also be a reduction in the amount that we have to pay them for FBO service, services. And then since the fuel facility is ours, it's self, self-service fuel, we would have an increase in airport revenues from fuel, from the sale of fuel. Again, here's just some images to give you an idea of what we'll be doing with the self-service fuel. Next one is runway 1230 Pappy and Reel. And I wanted to, obviously, you guys are all pilots and know exactly what that is. What the Pappy and Reel system is, it is a lighted system that gives pilots indication whether their approach is too high or too low. The system that we are using is 20 years old or older. It is an old system. The FAA refuses to maintain the system because it's not, we did not install what they wanted to see. With this, the FBO is not trained or qualified to maintain the, the Pappy system that we're currently using. And we have electrical problems with the system. The problems are that, essentially, that it's 20 years old. And when components go bad, they're extremely expensive to find and becoming, really becoming harder to find the components and the costs are increasing. So, this is, this is in addition to, to the CIP.
So, so once we replace the equipment, then FAA will stand in and maintain it?
Yes, yes, it is. That is a, a goal of adding this to CIP, that the FBO and the city, the maintenance responsibilities will go to the FAA.
Is this the system that's, tubes yet? Not, it's not integrated circuits and so forth? It's, it's still the old tubes, or there was that?
That could have been the weather system.
Or was that replaced?
The AWAS.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that was a different.
I think that's a different system.
Yeah, that was a different system.
All right.
Okay.
Sorry. No, thank you.
Doesn't know what tubes are.
No, no, I did, I went to a training, I know now.
This is scheduled for 2019. Wouldn't you think it should be sooner than 2019 to be repaired if, if indeed that electrical system is not working properly and an airplane comes in and can, can, can crash?
Yes, the, I understand what you're saying. In discussion with Airport Advisory Commission, they would rather see the fuel facility take priority over the Pappy system. However, these, these can move. If we do have a catastrophic failure of the system, we can move that project forward. Also, there are other fin, funding opportunities if, if the system does, uh, stop, yeah, stop working.
Our community development inspector, who's also a licensed electrician, has been out there working on the, on the site. We have at least one extra board in place right now, I believe, if not, just, just the one, right?
Yeah, just the one board. That, that is really the, the biggest problem is the board. There's another component that they, they fry every couple times lightning strikes. We have started to kind of stock up on those because they do go up about 10% every year. So, we are, we have a few of those on hand now. Awesome. So, going to the second page, the joint seal on the apron. This is, the image here on the screen is to signify what the apron is on an airport, airport. I'm guessing most of you know. So, the apron was constructed in 1992. The seals have been main, spot maintained in 2006 and 2012. It is listed on the CIP in FY19 because really the engineer assumes that we should have to do maintenance, maintenance, excuse me, maintenance on this again. Just like with the crosswind runway and the taxiway, our apron is doing really, really well. The quality of it is, is maintaining. So, this again is preventative maintenance that we want to make sure that we are keeping water from getting down in the joints. Then also listed on there, a major priority for the Airport Advisory Commission is T-hangers. So, after the projects that are listed on there currently, we will accrue federal funds in 2019 and 2020 to then build T-hangers. T-hangers have been constantly pushed off for, I'm guessing, probably 10 years. There's always been priorities that have come up before it, so.
Longer than that.
Longer than that, I've been told. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But also with T-hangers, since we are taking a few years off with state funding, as you can see in the CIP, the state does fund vertical infrastructure. So, we may investigate putting in a grant to the state to, to build T-hangers at the airport. That is an option that we will look at. That is the end of the CIP update. Yeah, please.
Why do I think I recall some issue with the main runway itself?
Yes, the main runway was in FY15. So, this is FY16 and beyond. So, the main runway is not listed here because we're already moving forward with it.
A $4 million project, $400,000 local match.
Right. That was actually two years of budgeting.
This is, this is the future CIP. That's, that's a funded project in this fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
But for the main runway, wasn't it two years of budgeting to, to cover it?
No, we, we split, we did, we did the main runway and the design and reconstruction in one fiscal year, and then we separated the taxiway, design and construction into another fiscal year.
So, the runway is being done in 2015?
Yes. Yep, we are.
Total tearout and redo?
Total, yep. We, we are on schedule to probably mid-spring start construction on, on the main runway at the airport.
Bids are been out, left?
Bids have not been let yet. They are still going through the designing, but our schedule that we have with the FAA would, would lead to, it's actually probably an early summer construction, I believe. But it will be, it will be torn out and reconstructed this summer.
Now, this may be a dumb question for you, but are they going to extend the runway any further when they reconstruct it, or is it going to be constructed the exact same length that it is?
It will be, yes, it will be constructed exactly the same length. We will not be widening it. We will not be lengthening it.
How long will it be out of service?
The main runway, I do not have an exact time on that. Our goal, though, is to keep the crosswind taxiway available so that the airport will not actually be shut down, that we will be able to, to keep, keep service at the airport.
Except when they do the portion where they cross.
Yes, and, and in doing that, this is, this is another thing that I'm working with the engineers on. We want to provide temporary access to the crosswind runway so that we can keep primarily the commercial interests in town, the commercial pilots flying. If, if we are not able to do the temporary connection in the crosswind runway, then the airport will be down for hopefully no more than two weeks. They are able to get, to get that segment done quickly.
Just that one segment would take two weeks?
Well, it's got, it's got a cure.
Well, yeah, it's got a cure.
So, they gotta get it and ripped out?
Well, that, you have a contract, have a, a date certain completion with penalties?
That, that is something that I know the, the Airport Advisor Commission strongly wants, and I am supportive of it too. The question becomes whether FAA regulations allows us to, to have date certain and penalties on that. That is something that I have to clarify with the engineers and our advisors from the FAA.
Think when they did the crosswinds, they didn't?
There wasn't.
FAA has never been known for any interest in urgency.
There wasn't anything like that, so, I don't believe, because it ran over.
It's our responsibility to keep those for our commercial customers, our local commercial customers.
Yep, very much so. And when the FAA, when our, our project engineer, his boss and his boss's boss were in town twice, and when we were at, me and Steve went to the airport, or the Iowa Aviation Commission, again, there we did have a private meeting with those gentlemen, and we did stress upon them the importance the Muscatine Municipal Airport is to our commercial operations in town and the industry in town. So, myself, the engineers, and with the support of the, the local industry, we will, we will do what we can to ensure that the runway stays open.
When will you be able to ascertain what the FAA allows as far as a completion contract? When will you be able to ascertain what the FAA allows as far as a completion contract?
I will, I'll have that for you the, at the next in-depth meeting. I'm presenting on CDBG that night, so I can address that there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else counsel? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, housing and loan program update, Dave Gobin. Hi, Dave.
Good dog. It was $400,000 just to design that.
I'm gonna start off with a, an update where we are on the loan program. Because we're kind of, kind of proud as well as working with the banks to put together something pretty special. So with that, there were four members that worked together to bring this program in place. And it's now, it's pretty much ready for primetime, applications agreed to, the program's been sort of signed off on. As, this has not been a press release on it yet, but we're close to having that done by early part of next week. These are the four members, the three local banks, and of course, us as the city worked together to try to cover a pilot district, which I'll get into in a moment. And it started out with this CDBG lo, uh, program. We, we received a $500,000 grant to, I don't know if some of you remember the back door equals the front door setup. Well, with that in place, what we did was, we, we said, can we stretch those dollars? You know, can we make, and also get some of those property owners to put some skin in the game? And that, well, I said that there was, we discovered through, through the invitations and, so sort of introductions, had discovered an older program that had been in place with some money set aside from the banks. This is not new ground that's been plowed. This is something that we could take advantage of resurfacing. And lo and behold, we found the old loan documents and circulated them among the banks. And we started the process. What we're able to do with this is be able to, to stretch those grant dollars to, from $500,000 or after some engineering costs, we'll call it 300, from 300 to possibly as much as 600,000 or 700,000, let alone what the utilities are going to put into the program. We may be up to $800,000 or $900,000 of project value instead of just the half million where most of it was taken up by engineering and such. It would have been very little to get a lot done. Now we're able to do this. So that was some of the background. The banks put aside a million dollars for this program collectively. And what we did was, we wanted to make sure it was an easier process too. We didn't want, you know, appraisals and all those other things to have to go through this. And so we created a low-doc and a low-interest incentive for the program. The minimum loan value, and I barely can read that, is going to be 500, uh, $5,000. It, it's, can't be less than that, otherwise it's not a lot of, a lot of effort for very little. The pilot district we've designed is from Mulberry Street to Mississippi Drive. I, I don't know if you can see this, but it's pretty much that general zone. From Mississippi Drive to Third Street, Pine to Mulberry, to give you that rectangle area, that's the pilot. If it's working well in that little zone, we're able to talk, sit down with the banks again and expand that to other areas like Grandview or out a little bit towards Park and things like that, maybe even stretch it out another street back or two. So that is, that's, that's why we're starting small. You don't start with cutting the whole hog, you just cut a little bit, just get the bacon. The objectives we have here is to improve the current buildings that you see, both interior, exterior, HVAC, mechanical, electrical, all sorts of things. We also want to protect the historical character of the buildings, primarily what you see from the street and whatnot. Make them nice and shiny and bright and look like new again, if not, at least make them look new old. And also the historic district. It, it also would blend in nice and be a very good attraction and accretive to the value of the district. And then, of course, we're, we're very much looking at this as from an experience perspective. You walk into a store, in some cases, you get, you, you worried about getting dust on your shirt sleeves and all kinds of things. So you, this is a way to have a better business experience or user experience and also environment. Our main focus on this is, is building improvements, historic character preservation, and to facilitate and enhance the CDBG project that we have. That's that back door, front door thing. You will be getting at the, in December's in-depth, a more detailed presentation by Adam. I believe that's on December 11th. So that's when you'll be getting more and more information about the project and status of it. I'll leave it there, I went over my minute and a half. Leave you to have some questions. This is the first of two presentations I'll be giving tonight.
Dave, so the, so the back, the current backside of those properties will be upgraded, but will they still have the period architecture generally?
That is, that is the plan.
That's the objective?
Yeah, windows, doorways, things like that. Whereas if we had not come up with this program to marry up with the grant dollars, we may have had to have not, not been able to attack that element, which we thought was very important.
Yeah, so do I.
Yeah.
So you really have a multiplier effect here with what you've arranged?
By doing it this way, yes. It started in July or August, or August, I would say. Adam had explained the program to me as I was being introduced to it, the CDBG project. And I said, man, you know, the property owners don't have any skin in the game. And this was the one way to do it, one way to do it. Is there any other commentary you'd like to?
That sounds great.
Anyone else counsel?
Looking forward to get moving.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Go on to the next one here. A lot of you have been hearing over the last few months that we've had, we do have a housing shortage or inventory issue regarding affordable, or I'll call it almost gap housing. Whereas, a lot of recruitment has happened here in, from the major companies. And yet, they're not able to keep them living here, but they can in fact hire them. One of our objectives as a city is to get them to work here and live here. Until they are, got their sea legs under them and made an establishment in the community that, that, hey, this is not, this is not that bad. In a lot of cases right now that people are feeling forced to do it, we want to make it more welcoming. And providing some affordable housing, affordable and available accommodations in the city was primarily based off the fact that there's a very low inventory. A couple of, three years ago, I mean, I won't even go a couple of years ago. Realtors were telling me there was a constant flow of 300-plus houses, houses, not just housing units, but houses on the market at any one given time. That was the norm, that was an expected, expected norm. Now there's less than 100. And that seems to be a real eye-opener to the realtor's sector here. But also, there's a lack of quality housing in the downtown area. You have some really nice homes, like the condos and such, but then you have the balance off with the low income and the Section 8 housing as well. It's kind of a, the balancing act is a real interesting dynamic. But here's some of the basic problems, and this, I believe this printout is in your packet. Is that correct, Adam?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So I don't need to go through in, word for word, or otherwise my, my first name would be Reed. Here's the problems as we've identified them so far. We've done some market research in the city, some has been done by the, the students at the Iowa, is it Iowa State or University of Iowa?
University of Iowa.
They, they came down and did some initial work too.
The less, the lesser one, yeah.
The lesser one. Well, that way I stayed, that way I stayed neutral by having you guys answer the question. Interesting, though, their perspective on their, their, their research perspective was all based off the youth and entertainment and things like that. And not necessarily the overall blend of different needs in the community. So I had to kind of balance that out too, as well as when I looked through this. And others can, others on my staff here all worked with me to kind of come up with what I felt was an appropriate way to present this. Our key, we've come down to one major key objective here for this whole program, and this is it. We want to create the quality downtown housing units that move the paradigm of the downtown to an appealing sense of place. You can Wikipedia that if you want to know what that means. These are the basic observations that we've found based off talking to some companies and some other nonprofits as well, like the hospital and school systems and such. We primarily have found there's a need for one to three-bedroom housing. And those are, those are apartments in general. And that's not just the downtown, but that's overall. But our focus has been, in our discussions internally, has been, the focus should be primarily on quality of the housing. Pricing will come with it and all those things. But maintaining the quality is what keeps the, the, keeps the people living here, I think, more than anything. If they can find a place, boom, we'll have a nice place for them to live. I, my last bullet here is one that has stirred several conversations, but it's one in which I believe is the truth. There is a paradigm that happens when you have this mixed housing initiative. And that is, the current level of housing is driving certain kinds of businesses to downtown that serve a demand. They are creating, in a sense, their own market. The market's being fulfilled by the housing, by the storefronts and such that fill that demand. You change the paradigm of what lives upstairs, you're going to see different kinds of businesses moving in downstairs. And I'm not going into the details of what that is. But I think you guys have heard me nothing on that one. Here's a proposed concept that we've come up with, and that is based around the fact that to develop or revent, re-vigorate or revitalize the downtown to something that has that high-quality standard, it's going to be more than, more money to do that than it would normally be to invest, for a regular investor to meet modest returns on investment. Primarily because the buildings are old. And they need to be redesigned internally, they need to be more modernized so that they accommodate for more safety features such as sprinklers and, and fire escapes. And also for access too. As we talked about, primarily atriums that had have elevators and corridors that would go down through several buildings. And we can condoize those things up from street, from the storefronts above, above the storefronts to second floor and above. That would really change the dynamic as well. We would, the, the city can own a for-profit entity. I would, I've done this before. It's primarily when developers won't touch it with a 10-foot pole because they can't get their return. There's a couple of things, and I'm going to be talking about this with the bond counsel tomorrow on how to structure something like this. But it, there's different types of corporations that would fit better, that the city would own. We would also create a trust, community development trust, where we would have a, that's where, that would be owned potentially by the people that would put money into such a program. And it would be more of a social investment type of program. And when I say social investment, there is a return on investment on social, on social investing. It's just that it's slower in its return. So, some of the things we have on here are in the packet, I'll mention it in, in brief, but I've already kind of gone through them. There's a lot of financial benefits to what we're talking about too, to the potential property owners. And also the investor pool. We would see some of these properties being brought back from either public ownership or abandonment or very low assessed values to something, if you put the money in, it's going to raise the values or even bring them back onto the tax rolls. The other things that there's a tremendous amount of income that could be generated from these. For example, if you take an old building that's, they're only renovate, they're only renting out the second floor, but they've got two more floors above them that are kind of empty or just never been renovated. Those have an income potential that have not been realized. So that is something that, that could be taken advantage of in these circumstances. So our rental-free structure, as we've designed it, would, would also pay back the investment pool on top of the cost of running these facilities. I'll leave it at that for the questions. I do have more if you need them, but I just want to make sure that I stop there and give you pause for thought.
Counsel? Anyone?
With you so far.
Very good, Dave.
Do you want me to continue?
Continue.
What?
Continue, please.
Okay, just wanted to give you a pause for thought on that. These are some of the tax incentives that we have discovered through research and such. There's one more, and I can't remember what it was, but I had to write it down so I do remember it. There's a number of benefits that the investment pool could realize as a result of, of the renovation of these buildings downtown. We would convert them to what they call workforce housing. And workforce housing has a lot of opportunity to benefit the investor as well as getting the job done. And that's really what I want to get down, I just want to get it done. But, well, I think we figured out it was, it could be up to anywhere from 45 cents to 65 cents on a dollar invested. Could be returned in some fashion. Some of it's federal, some of it's state, some of it's a combined, combination of the two. Some of it is, is not, you know, it's not necessarily even funds that have to be returned. They're primarily grants or credits. These are the type of buildings that we're looking at, multiple buildings, large single buildings that could be. We've got, we want, we want to use the parking that is available as much as we can without having to build or buy new one, new, new parking, because that is very expensive. And some of those properties, as I mentioned earlier, are under, underdeveloped. And have just been sitting around for years. This would be one of them, and it's virtually owned by the municipality. This is the MPW building that's been vacant since the 70s. It's still very sound externally. But this is one in which we really feel that the MPW should surplus. We see no reason why they shouldn't. They still come up with the excuse, well, what if, what if we need it in the future? I, I don't get that one. But here's another one. These, this one is a multiple number of property owners. This one is a multiple number of property owners that they could own the street, street-level businesses, and all we'd wanna condoize, take a line, if you will, and just draw above the, the store levels, and we could renovate and cor, and condoize the, the access to those top floors. And not all of those floors have people living in them, they're dark. And that was this, this, it's interesting, this is the first week I was here, I said, oh, this is the problem, and I went out at dusk, because I didn't, my family wasn't here yet, and I spent a lot of time walking downtown. I said, oh, the solution to the problem is right above us.
Where is this located?
This is right on Second Street.
This is on Walnut, isn't it?
It is.
Walnut and Second.
What, you need to have them at grade to do this. How many other half-blocks or blocks do you think might?
Well, I'm not saying they have to be at grade, you can do things at different levels. It's not that difficult to adapt. But again, that's gonna take some engineering, a redesign of interiors to make them accountable, you know.
Oh, that's price carpeting.
Acceptable. So that's, that pretty much does it. I just wanted to make sure you understood what the program, you've been hearing about what we're doing and why.
Okay, I like it. Dave, the investment pool, would that be primarily public, then?
It could be. There's no, there's no reason that it, it'd be, it's just companies that wanna put money in it. It can be, it can be for private individuals that wanna put money in it. I mean, the return is supposed to be to whoever, it's like a limited partnership, I don't care what a trust is, it can be a number of different types.
Combination.
Yeah. But we need to talk to bond counsel to find out what the structures are available for us to create. And of course, obviously, you guys, you have to all prove it. We come back to you with something that's, here's the structure, and we have some funding, we've got some ideas on how to fund the initial.
The seed, or whatever.
Yeah, a little seed, we need to do that.
Okay.
So that's something that we'll be coming back to you with, too, on the 4th of December, that particular part of it, that function. Any other questions?
Counsel, no questions? Okay, thanks again, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, item five, review of ethics policy and/or council rules.
Greg. Thank you, Your Honor. What you have before each night is a, is a sample policy, and another one from another community, I believe it was Marion. Several cities have been going through the process of adopting ethics policies for their cities. There's currently no guiding documents, whether that be the league, or, or the city, or, or other resources. The city employee manual does have an ethics policy that we included last time it was updated. You've seen this discussion piece in my weekly updates, and have the opportunity to discuss it with mayor and a couple council members as well, we thought we'd bring the concept forward tonight for city council review and consideration. So I, in, in working with our attorney, you've got a draft policy before, you've also got one that was done by Marion, and brought it forward for your consideration tonight. Our council rules do not address this portion, or an ethics policy. Several communities, Burlington has been reviewing it as well, and look at, looking at other communities across the state that have incorporated these into their council rules. So I, I thought I'd bring it forward and start the discussion tonight with city council. Part two is, is a minor issue with the council rules, and, and the last time city council took a look at the rules, we had several discussion items, one of those was the public comment portion, and, which is five minutes in the rules. In practice, it has been three minutes, was not changed the last time the council rules came up, and I'm trying to remember, I believe that was after council member Lang left the city council, that the council reviewed the rules. So I'd suggest that if we wanna continue with the three minutes, that we go ahead and incorporate, incorporate that officially in the rules, rather than the five minutes that's currently stated in there. And just a reminder, the council can always, or has the ability, a majority of council has the ability to waive council rules, if there is an appropriate time to allow a longer comment period for whatever the topic may be. This just provides for the normal, or typical comment period. So those are the two items that I wanted to bring forward tonight for council discussion or consideration. And if there's a desire to move forward, I'd bring it back at a regular meeting for council action.
Forward?
I think so, yeah. I'm generally in favor of this sort of thing. Of course, I come from a whole different background, I'm born and raised in the city of Chicago, so.
They don't have one.
Exactly. This is important, I think, and, and I think we should consider. I do have a question. Are the council rules something that's required by statute, or does this effectively replace them? What do we envision here?
I would envision adding them to the city, to the city council rules. I have, I keep a copy here at the desk in case, but the council rules that you've adopted basically deal with how the meeting is run, basically adopting Robert's rules with a few exceptions, how the, what the agenda looks like, motions, sergeant-at-arms for our regular meetings, those types of things, open meetings laws is, is in here, and each council adopts their own set of rules. Ours happens not to have this portion within it. And that's where I would suggest that you place them.
So then it's not, then it's not part of the city code, then?
Correct.
I merely feel that three minutes is plenty instead of five. I don't know how that's been working out for you.
It works out fine for me. The only thing is, is on our website, where all the codes are, are easily to access, it does say five minutes.
But we might change that to three.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's the notion for moving forward. One of, one of the two.
But I've, I've never really had a problem, even with the five.
Yeah.
I mean, we've never had a, there have been a couple instances that we've had a lineup of people ready to talk, and giving them five minutes each would've made the meeting last until midnight, but I, three, five, I don't, I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference. We just need to make sure that what we're doing is what's in print.
Consistent.
Yes.
And then we can adjust that at the meeting if we so desire.
Yes, council can waive, or can, can waive a rule, or council rule during the meeting.
Okay. The other thing is, you can get a spokesperson for the whole group, and have the spokesperson take care of it.
True. No, no further comments?
I'm fine with it, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, everything in here is reasonable.
Phil?
I, I think we've always operated in an ethical manner. I don't see there's a major issue, whether we have, have a true policy or not. I think council's always done an excellent job. If we needed to make changes, we've made changes. For instance, the residence requirement was clarified a couple of years ago, so I'm fine with it coming forward.
Fine.
There you have it. Anything else?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay.
Pardon me?
For Scott, three minutes enough, Scott?
Fortunately, the three minutes doesn't apply to council members.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just checking, I just wanted to make sure that Scott's taking care of it.
Any other comments, counsel? Your motion to adjourn?
So, move.
How about council comments?
If you want.